Apparently it's 7 o'clock, so we're going to call the meeting to order of the Town Hall of Halifax Planning Board. We're having our meeting this evening as almost every evening that we have a meeting at 499 Plymouth Street, which is the Town Hall building. I'm supposed to let you know that this meeting is being recorded by Area 58 and will be available to view on YouTube, and I still believe it is available on Community Access Television. Tonight's members present are: to my left, Amy Truque; to my right, Jamie Walsh; to my extreme right, I think it's Bruce Sylvester; and joining us on Zoom is Bert Gainer and myself, Tom Millius. First order of business is to approve tonight's agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to add or comment on before we proceed?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved the second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, because we have somebody joining us on Zoom, we have to do a roll call vote. Thank you, Bert. We'll start with you, Bert.
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Myself, Tom, yes. Right thing. We just need to go to our appointments.
Yep, 539 Plymouth Street.
539 Plymouth Street, new plans. And somebody is here to represent 539 Plymouth Street, so we're gonna call you up.
Kyle, how many of you are back engineers? Better if I stand?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So 539 Plymouth Street has been in front of you a few times, I do believe.
Yep.
We just, just an update, we just went to Conservation on Tuesday, and stormwater in the NOI were approved after patrolling with PGP Engineering Review, and he also lumped in. Plans, excellent event, just proficiency. But, so we have our revised plans, which, I'll hit on the two major things, I guess, first. We were requested to provide turnaround for the fire department. If you look on the, it's kind of like a hammerhead, what we would call it, first sheet, which is just kind of an overall, shows our grading.
Just a little.
And then on our third sheet is our detail sheet, we provided more detail where the fire, the ladder truck could actually pull in, back up, and then turn around and get to everywhere on the site, and then get out safely. That was part of the request of the fire department to provide a turnaround adequately.
Bert, Bert.
Yes.
I just want you to tell me if you need different views of the documents, because I can share them with you. So if you're requesting to see like the whole plan or anything like that, just let me know so I can go to it.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, it's good that it can support the ladder truck. I can't think of anything tall enough on that property. It's good.
No, and we did look for, the ladder truck has a pretty restrictive turning radius.
Right, so we go for the worst.
So we go for the worst case. And the area behind both of those ends of that turn is relatively flat as well, so, but the tires could go on there, but we like to provide the gravel to where the tire would actually go, so that we can make sure that the vehicle can turn safely.
So he's got traction, yeah.
Exactly. So we did that. I didn't see any writing from the fire department back, but.
The fire department did send something for us.
Okay.
I'll read it into record in a little while.
Okay. And then, I just wanted to touch on the drainage design. So it's a gravel driveway, 24 feet wide, but it does vary towards the back, because it's got a couple curves and things of that nature. But we have a gutter line, so it's a forced low point on one side of, if you're to drive in the right side of the driveway.
I think.
It'll be on this plan, yeah.
Okay.
So all the grading comes from the post office side, or left plan side, and sheets off over the gravel driveway to the forced low point on the right side of the drive. Collects all the stormwater, and then it's pitched to get down to the infiltration basin in the front. There's some good sandy soils there, so we're able to infiltrate all the way up to the 100-year storm, which is, I think, eight and a half and change inches in 24 hours. So that all gets directed to two sediment four bays, which are those two little basin looking images before the actual basin itself. And that's due to the sandy soil conditions. It's called rapid infiltration, and we have to have two forms of pretreatment. That infiltration basin allows for total suspended solids to drop out, groundwater to recharge into the ground, and also treats for, I believe it's phosphorus, I forget the percentages, phosphorus and nitrogen. That also has a photo free board, so that in the 100-year storm, it's not right at the top of the basin. That is, the area, there's a 17 by 17 garden shed. As part of the revisions, we brought water and electricity overhead.
And that's within 300 feet, right?
Oh, the road is.
So he's gonna have to go to see the historical.
Yep, and there's been discussion at that point.
All right, I talked to him yesterday, I'm sorry, and he said you should have a letter, because he's okay with it. I showed him everything.
Okay, I don't know that we've gotten a letter yet, but we'll look for it.
Yes.
You do have a letter. It's in the file on your graph.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
So now, yeah, we have a water service going to it, and the overhead electrical. The Highway had requested that there's be a paved apron.
Yes.
That was after we submitted these revised plans. So, but we're completely fine with doing a paved apron, and it'll prevent any gravel from coming out on the road, from tracking out onto Plymouth Street.
That was his concern. I spoke to him earlier.
Okay.
And he said that 10-foot, I think he said 10-foot, does that sound right?
Yeah, to the right of way.
Which is typical of what other people have done on the street.
Yep.
He also wanted to make sure that we were including the fact that he was to be responsible for anything dragged out onto the 106, you know, in terms of cleanup.
Yep.
Because that's always a problem in a lot that isn't paved. You're always dragging something out onto the street.
That apron will help with that as well. It'll keep the gravel.
Yeah, if it, if it becomes problematic, then maybe you can want to do something a little addition, a little rumble strip or something.
Yep. And this is, this is just, I just want to comment, this is the final condition. We have a temporary, during construction, we have a temporary pad that's a more rutted rock.
Right.
It'll scrub the tires of the trucks as they come in and out. So that, that's construction period, and then this is more final.
Well, I think what he was talking about was if, if the apron didn't suffice, that we might be looking to have that added beyond the apron.
Yeah.
There was also a question that came up at the last meeting about the two trees out front. Those are still both scheduled to be removed in order to facilitate the access wire?
Yeah, because of the location of the sidewalk, and crosswalk and sign, and the neighboring septic, and their driveway, we tried to try to center this one between all those three things.
I don't know if you spoke to the Highway supervisor, but I did.
I didn't speak directly, I just.
He was okay with those trees being removed.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. For construction period, we do have proposed the silt sacks, which will go catch basins, which.
You're gonna have to do that.
Yeah, to protect the catch basins, so that's on there as well. No on-site wastewater, so we have a port body proposed, which got correspondence with the border health.
Yeah.
Having previously.
They approved.
I apologize if I'm repeating anything.
No, no, it's okay.
No, I'm glad you had to say it. Done, it's okay.
We discussed on Tuesday at Conservation, the material storage bins. They put a condition in because one of them was labeled compost. The condition was that it wasn't any biosolid type compost, which perfectly defined by us. A lot of the area, other than driveway, is going to be plant sale display. In the rear, there's a nursery grow area. And, okay, that's all right.
Are there any chemicals or anything that we used on the plants when they're growing?
No, if it was, that was a point of discussion during Conservation. A lot of the sales are potted or root ball plants. So if there is like a starter fertilizer used, it's local, very local to the plant itself. It's not like a, you know, fertilizing the whole field.
Okay.
So it's more like just, this plant needs a little help here, because it came off a truck. Very localized. Let's see here. As I said, PGP Engineering Review. We have his comment letters, and we addressed his comments.
Yep.
We do provide a high point at the right of way line, so that'll keep any of our sites water from going into Plymouth Street. So it's pitched from the property line back towards that infiltration basin, so capture it. That'll actually help with the, any sediment too.
Yeah.
Send it back to us. But, you know, sediment does happen. And.
I'm assuming that most of any sediment that would be created would be from the transporting of materials in and out.
After everything's stabilized, like, so for once the site, the drainage basin and everything is stabilized, construction kind of ceases.
Yeah.
That gravel, that gravel drive is gonna get very packed down, and I would be, you don't see a lot of track out from, once it's, once it's compacted. It's probably that first.
Until it gets.
Until it gets nice and compacted. It's a dense grade top layer, and that's typically what contractors use for, right before their pavement. So they use a coarser gravel, dense grade, and then their pavement. So once that gets packed down, it really sets in. But, yeah, if anything was to, you'd really have to have some stuff fall off in the entrance, fall off a truck in the entrance, for some stuff that's being trucked in there to cause that sediment. And then, like I said, it's pitching back towards our site, so it's going into the seven or four bays, which have to get cleaned out after that. Sil fence is wrapping around all the disturbed area, which is, you know, most locations are on the 50-foot buffer, for wetlands. We have a snow storage area back by the turnaround. Just plowing, and if you have to pile it up, and then that turnaround will also, not only for the ladder truck, but for vehicles delivering plants and things like that, that's a perfect turn off for them. The ladder truck's larger than what we anticipate going there for a vehicle. Provide ten parking spaces, material, plant display area. We tried to keep it on towards the post office side, with conservation in mind, just trying to keep everything as far as we could within reason to the, to the wetlands. And then just try and get that stormwater all centrally located towards the good material. I think that's the gist of it. I hope you can answer any questions.
Anybody have anything, or any concerns, or anything to comment on?
Well, so on the letter from PGP Engineering, just so everybody can hear it, so there's no exterior lighting going anywhere on the site.
Not proposed, no.
And then, the other question he asked, do we have a drawing of the shed that you proposed?
I uploaded some images of a typical one, but not like.
They're in the file.
Thanks.
And it's not a.
It should be its own little, or is it its own folder, or is it just?
I found him.
Thank you.
And this is through discussion with the Historic Commission as well.
And this is what the Historic Commission saw in okay?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
He liked it because it's old style look.
Yeah.
And this is just like the style, if you will. It's 17 by 17, so it's not like, you're not gonna get like.
No, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it's along those lines, and that was from historic discussions.
Okay. That looked nice.
Yeah.
Is that an historic area in Hingo? I pulled it up out of there.
Oh, nice.
Yep.
Are you planning a sign? Did I see a sign on that?
We did not. I have a proposed sign. You have, I'd have to look up time, but, oh, this is an historic letter?
Yeah.
No concern?
Should I read it, eh?
Oh, yeah, couldn't hurt.
Okay. The Historical Commission of Halifax sent a letter on October 14th with regards to the two sheds that we just had a picture up on the screen a few minutes ago. The proposed shed and signage on 539 Plymouth Street, but we don't have signage yet, correct?
No, on this plan.
When I talked to him, historical, he said to me to, if I do in the sign, to do the same thing everybody has on town, like the white ones.
With black photos?
Yeah, that's why he said to me on the historical.
That's why I was asking.
Yes, yes, but I.
Maybe he addresses it even yet. "On behalf of the Halifax Historical District Commission members John Shay and Kevin Shay, the Historic District Commission met on October 14th, 2025, to review your proposed shed and signage for 539 Plymouth Street with Sam, applicant owner of Naturebound Garden Landscaping Incorporated. At this time, the Commission approves the proposal of what was shared, and does not foresee any concerns with the proposed shed or sign, provided the final installation adheres to the building design and materials presented at the meeting. Pine wood construction, natural wood finish, approximately 17 by 17. A sign consistent with the existing district's style, featuring white posts and traditional non-illuminated design. We appreciate meeting with Sam to ensure the project complements the character of Halifax Historic District, and look forward to finalizing approval once reviewed by the full commission. Sincerely, John Shay."
Just as a little follow-up to the sign, that's still a separate permit to the building department.
What about the lights? I have to get separate, I got lights, I gotta get that per on the chook, correct?
That would be here.
Yeah.
I'm with you.
Yeah, we have some relatively strict lighting.
Okay.
So, that's, that's important. You're gonna light it up, and, you know, even now, I mean, if you were operating at 5 o'clock, you're gonna have some lights in there. So you're gonna have to come in with a plan.
Yeah. Yeah, we do later for the light.
You'll have to do reapplication fee and modification.
What do you think?
I think at this point, we'd have to do it later, because I don't really detail all.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, you're not ready to do it now.
Yeah, and, yes, and I, I wanna.
You gotta, you know, look at the bylaws for the direction of the lighting.
Yeah, yeah, you do it, yeah.
The lumas, the whole.
Yeah, and we work with a few companies that provide this with lighting plans as well.
So just, just to be clear, if we were to approve this, it's gonna be approved without any lighting?
Yep.
But inside the shed, you have light, correct?
Yeah, I don't think that's a problem.
Shats, shats, okay.
But are you gonna have, like, what about exterior light on the building, just as long as it's, I mean, should we specify? I'm just thinking we should talk about it. Are we talking spotlights on either side? I mean, what if he puts spotlights on all sides, you know?
Yeah, that's tough, because, I mean.
Is there like a safety?
Yeah, I, I wanna say something typical of a, of a residence, but, you know, what's typical today? I don't know.
Depends.
Yeah, I'd say, you know, a regular porch light.
Which would go with the historical nature of the.
Yeah, yeah. I wouldn't have a problem with a floodlight, but, at least one for a total lumina.
I don't think so.
In the middle.
Yeah.
Okay. And we can get, you can get a plan for the other lights later, because it's gonna be next year anyways, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
That'll be great.
Okay. Do you want me to read?
I have a couple of questions whenever you're ready.
God, we're ready.
How about, can we talk before making previous meetings? We have hours of operations.
Good point.
Hours of operations, seven. What's, what's, like, come, like, seven to five, seven to six? Whatever you guys, I'm gonna leave up to you guys. Whatever everybody else.
Well, you know, I, you know, seven to seven is typical.
Yeah, but without light right now, this time of year.
No, you're not gonna.
Oh, you're not gonna be open in some, yeah.
You'll be till last.
Yeah.
And then seasonal, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. We can get that, yeah.
You might wanna run some underground, like, wires while you're digging up the site, some conduits for them to get out back.
Yeah, it's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah, get your.
Otherwise, you're gonna have to go through the concrete, or not concrete, but the gravel.
You're gonna have to rip what you put down.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We do that.
But you need a plan, but you still need a plan for us, so you know where to direct this.
But if it was under there, at least they can come back with a plan.
Yeah. We do next year's driveway something, you know what I mean? So, so we have the idea. I like the plan.
I think too, if, if there are going to be, like you said, hours of operation, when it does get docked early, that if there is, like in the letter says, power and light will be needed for operation, any, any lights should be shielded, or any future lights on the property should be shielded from the residents and.
Yeah, that's all in the script.
Yeah, that's.
Make sure that.
Correct.
I keep it as residents next door.
Yeah.
Oh, with LED lighting now, you can cut everything off pretty good.
Yeah. What else do you got, Bert?
I'd like to know if the actual fire chief, like he has done in the past, has actually sent a letter in.
Yes, yes, he did.
And then backing up, is it okay? Usually they do require a turning radius, but if it's okay with the fire chief, that they can pull in, back out, back up into the turnaround area, and then pull out straight, because that is a very, very busy section up there.
Yeah, he did send, he did send a letter, Bert.
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I would appreciate that.
Yep. Hello, the fire department is okay with this plan as long as nothing is stored or placed in the turnaround area. Regards, Chief Mike Witham.
Okay. Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Did you see the Highway Department's letters, Bert?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
I'm trying to think of anything we have in color.
I'm gonna get my notes up from the last meeting.
It's been through Conservation, it's Fire Chief.
She was preparing a letter at, I don't know that we've got one from them.
It was just on Tuesday, so.
Yeah.
They voted to approve the NOI and so on.
Yeah, yeah, she, she took the admin, confirmed.
I had that too.
Yeah, Peggy sent this email.
You wanna read that now?
Yeah, sure.
Chairman, if I could ask, are there, is there gonna be any vehicles stored on the property overnight?
Maybe it'll be chook, maybe it'll be chook, like the chocks I have for the nursery, you know what I mean?
Just for the new stuff.
Nursery.
I don't consider that unusual, but.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be.
What, 20 times?
Some.
Five on the, you know, all bits like this.
What, on the 100-year truck?
Ah, 350.
We're gonna have 350?
650.
I'm not talking about trailers or anything.
Yeah, 650.
Yeah.
You have an F-350 and an F-650, is that what you said?
Yeah, I'm gonna buy one. See, I have, now I have a 350. When they start going, if I make money, I'll buy a 650.
Okay.
It's all about being.
The white man, I love it.
Especially for the work trucks.
You know.
I think that's different.
Okay, I'm gonna read the Conservation letter into record. Good afternoon. Please note, at the Commission 11, 4, 2025 meeting regarding 539 Plymouth Street, the board voted the following. 539 Plymouth Street was an NOI hearing, and a motion was made to approve the notice of intent for 539 Plymouth Street with special conditions that no biosolids be stored on the property and to clean up the debris within the buffer zones. The NOI seems to have stated that it says, "To construct a landscape plant nursery with supply bins, gravel access drive, parking for 10 cars and a garden shed on the commercial business zone section of the property. Portions of the drive, part of the display area, the garden shed and associated clearing and grading are located within 100 feet of the wetlands." All in favor, 3 to 0. On the stormwater management peer review, a motion was made to approve stormwater management for 539 Plymouth Street with special condition that PGP Engineering do site visits and inspections. 3 to 0 vote by the Conservation Commission.
You good with that, Bert?
Yes, yes, thank you.
You bet. Um, oh.
Bert had brought up the question about the trees, and that's why I've tried to follow up on that today.
Okay.
Bert, so that you know, I spoke with Steve Hayward, who called me this afternoon concerning the trees that you had some concern about out front.
Yeah.
They, they are in the layout, the town layout, but he was actually enthusiastic about them coming down.
So it's okay, the yard won't come down?
Yeah, yes.
Don't do, why?
And he was fine with it. He, he didn't think they were in good enough shape to worry about.
I, uh.
I'm paraphrasing a little here.
If, if, just the runoff water, gonna be enough water to supply all the, the stock and all the trees and bushes and whatnot, or is, is not getting any water up to the property?
We, we do have a proposed water service coming from Plymouth Street. That was part of this revised plan set.
Do you want me to go back to that plan, Bert?
No, that's okay, as long as, it just, I probably just missed it, but.
Okay.
It seemed like you almost have to have water, you're gonna have, you know, my plan struck.
I don't know, so. Might even wanna put a well in this.
I was gonna say, we were gonna explore the future possibility of an irrigation well.
I'm excited now.
Good luck. Would have some experience there?
Yeah, it's failed, it's gone.
That's the old plan? That's maybe why. Oh, there it is. We're gonna, can you see that, or do you need any pluses?
It's a pretty small line.
Oh, I said, can you, can you point out where that water line is?
Yeah, so the water line comes from Plymouth Street. Mr. G, I don't know if you can see what I'm doing, but.
I don't know why that happened.
Is it a touch tree?
Yeah.
Sorry. So it comes out of Plymouth Street, we have to verify where the water main is, but we know it's on that shadow street because the hydrants are on that shadow street. And then it just kind of, towards the left side of the entranceway, straight up into the, towards the garden shed.
Into the shed.
And it's just a single line, so it's abbreviated WS for water service.
Are you planning to heat that shed?
Not, maybe in the future, not right now.
I was gonna say, you gotta keep that water line, you know?
Yeah, I might, I might heat it.
I mean, wrap it, but.
Again, with any piping that you're gonna need to water, anything out back, should be laid up, at least the conduits, before you do all the gravel.
Yeah, the problem was out of the gravel anyway, just to keep truckloads off of them.
Oh, right.
But, I do appreciate some.
I think the only note that I had on this to look at with a historical and a Conservation.
Conservation, yeah.
That was my recollection, but. And fire department was.
Turnaround, with the big discussion last time.
Yeah, yeah, turnaround. And, like I said, Bert had brought up the trees.
Yeah, trees, yeah.
And now we've added the, the apron, and we're all good with the turnaround, so. And, and the other condition that Highway wanted us to put in was the fact that it was their responsibility to maintain the roadway from anything that was dragged out onto the roadway.
I wrote that as one of my conditions.
Okay.
Should we open that to the public?
Yeah, it's a hearing. So, so anybody have? So, so any, anybody have any questions, concerns?
Yeah. Uh, Howard Randall, five sixty-three, representing Rancher Realty Trust, uh, and the butters in the back here. Are there any setbacks to the property line for the activity to take place on this?
The, I don't know what the setback is off of that, but.
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
Off line.
What we're talking about is the containment structures, buddy, cause that's the only thing on that side.
So, the, the material storage is seventeen point nine feet off the property line, adjacent to the post office. Um, did you say your last name was Randall, sir?
Yes.
Um, so it would be the width of the post office and then eighteen feet from your property.
Can you point to his property for me? So, thank you.
Um, and then the direct abutting to his property is here, which is a nursery area. And there's no concrete structure or shed or anything here. And it would be, gentlemen, I mean, if you can see the tree line here, um, I'm sure we could leave a buffer, leave a tree buffer between that line and any nursery work.
Is, is the property leased or who's, who do I sue?
You're going immediately to that?
No, well, I, I ultimately, I, I've been to all three meetings now. I guess, I mean, standing out my thirty-year political career on the planning board at this town, I was surprised that there isn't notification on a special hearing for, for this. But we're here, uh, only because of, uh, getting a notice to the conservation hearing. Is, is this being done under an agricultural exemption? I was surprised that.
Special permit from zoning board of appeals.
Zoning Board of Appeals, interesting, okay. Because as I read your table of use, the sales, it's essentially a sales room, is it? Uh, under, uh, one sixty-seven seven?
Do you have a decision?
I did, um, of the zoning. But I bet you I can find one.
Did, did their vote say what they were giving a variance?
That's what we're looking for, yeah. I, I remember reading it, I just don't, I don't wanna.
Cause it, it allows farms, as we know, and, uh, but then it's a salesman to stand for the display of sale of horticultural or floor house products, the major portion of which is grown and produced on the premises.
I have a denial letter.
Hmm?
It says denial.
Yeah, that came from the zoning agent.
Oh, wait a minute, all right, so back. It was on. Uh, recorded.
Commercial business.
Oh, okay.
What is the date of the report? Cause I would assume that any appeal is gone.
September twelve. September twelve.
And what is it?
I'll read it.
April sixteen.
Yeah, but it was recorded on September twelve.
Yeah.
Um, on April sixteen, twenty twenty-five, Kyle Guarini and Samron Morrow, fourteen seventy-four South Street Bridge Water Mass, um, at a meeting held on Monday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, the Halifax zoning board of appeals voted to grant your petition number ZBA twenty-five dash three to operate a nursery in a business zone said to be located at five thirty-nine Plymouth Street Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Charles Callahan, as shown on assessors map seventy-one lot two, book five one three eight O, page one eight one. There, um, the reason the building inspector had given it a, um, a denial letter in March twenty twenty-five was to send it to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit for one sixty-seven seven, table of use regulations of the town of Halifax requiring a special permit to operate a plant nursery, nursery in a business zone, special permit to construct a sales room for the sale of horticultural goods. The board voted unanimously five zero zero to grant your variance and special permit for petition number ZBA twenty-five three with all five voting members, Cosia Nasrallah, Gerald Joy, Peter Parcellin, Tina Kenyon, and Robert Dargan in favor. The special permit variance was granted based on the testimony presented at the hearing. Any changes from what was presented and approved must be brought back for the zoning board of appeals. Please be advised that all variances and or special permits shall comply with all the rules, regulations, and codes of the town Halifax. This decision shall not take effect until a copy of this decision certified by the town clerk to affect the twenty days have elapsed since this decision was filed in the office of the town clerk without any appeal having been dismissed or denied has been recorded in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds or with the assistant registrar of the land court for Plymouth County. And being a certified copy indicating such registry recording has been fil, filed, sorry, with the board.
So, has it been filed?
Yep, on the twelfth of September.
Okay.
Okay, what's the date on that letter?
The date on the letter was, um, April sixteen, twenty twenty-five.
But the recording is.
But the recording at the registry of deeds happened on September twelfth, twenty twenty-five at three, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you want the book and page?
No, thanks.
Do you? Book six zero three three two, page, all right, now I have to go in, two three six?
Two three six, yes.
Two what?
Two three six.
Okay, bye.
You bet.
So, that's a use variance.
That's correct.
Have you seen many of those?
Uh, recently, I think that we have.
Where is the public in that process? If you guys can give it away.
Well, not, the zoning board of appeals gives those.
Yeah, okay. Seems strange to me. It's only thirty years of public life, twenty years of the state's largest public law firm. Good. Any plans to gate the property after hours to limit access?
Haven't discussed that? Is that anything you're thinking about doing?
Haven't, we haven't thought about it, but we could. It's preferable.
Yeah. And will the applicant be the owner of the property when this takes force and that?
No, this, this, this is not the owner of the property, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. If the owner is leasing this section of this property. I, I assume it's leasing, right?
Yes, yes.
And what owners falls to the person leasing the property if he violates any of your conditions? Do they fall to the leasing?
I would say it falls to the, I wanna think it falls to the owner of the property. Is the ownership here? No.
Biden.
And because typically any violations fall back on the property owner, the owner, correct?
But you haven't seen the lease.
No. I, I, at least I haven't.
I haven't, but we should because actually any application that comes in front of us should have a purchase and sale or some type of lease in order to grant. Isn't that part of our bylaws?
Well, especially where we're, where we're granting it to the applicant and not the owner.
Yeah.
Potentially. So, um, I guess site plan, I'll read site plan. I think you'd probably want me to read site plan aloud, right? Uh, one sixty-seven twenty-eight?
Yep.
One sixty-seven twenty-eight. Site plan requirements. No permit shall be granted for any commercial, industrial, business, institutional, apartment, multi-dwelling municipal or school building or public utility structure, and none of the above classes of structures shall be constructed or externally enlarged, and no such use shall be expanded or established in an existing building or lot, not therefore to use for such purposes except in conformity with a site plan bearing an endorsement of approval by the planning board. Said site plan shall show the owner of record, location, zone boundary lines, easements or other legal restrictions, exact location of buildings on this lot with side, front, and rear dimensions, lot dimensions, topography, adjacent public ways, location of off-street parking, lighting, utility system, surface drainage, traffic flow, location and nature of open spaces with specific notations as to landscaping, locus plan and other details deemed necessary by the planning board. The planning board may waive or substantially reduce the site plan submission requirements for projects having limited or minor impacts consistent with the purposes of the chapter. A, applicants shall submit an original and nine copies of their site plan to the town clerk, who shall give the applicant a dated receipt. Within four days, the town clerk shall transmit one copy of each to the planning board, the board of health, the building inspector, the highway survey, surveyor, the water commissioners, the zoning administrator, the board of appeals, the conservation commission and board of selectmen and shall transmit written notice of the availability of the plans to the fire and police departments. Within thirty days of filing such application, the review boards and officers shall evaluate the application and the site plan with regard to the conditions and standards set forth in the chapter-related agency regulations and policies shall submit comments to the planning board or take any action thereon. The p, planning board shall not act without considering the reports of the review boards and officers unless thirty days from the date of filing have passed without receipt of such reports. The planning board shall note major recommendations of the review boards and office, officers in its decision and shall explain any major divergence from such recommendations. D, failure of the planning board to act within forty-five days of the filing of the application shall be deemed approval of the application and site plan. E, where a proposed development also falls under subdivision control, the applicant shall include information required for a definitive plan according to the current rules and regulations for the subdivision of land. However, planning board endorsement under this chapter shall not constitute approval under the subdivision control law. Um, do you want me to keep going now?
No, you don't need to.
Okay.
Just. But I would think the lease is critical element here.
It, it brings up an interesting point. Typically, the landowner is applying for all variances, all because they're the owner of record.
No.
I, I think, and I'm just thinking on the fly here, maybe we ought to bounce this off of council to make sure we're doing it correctly in terms of.
I would make that as a motion.
In terms of ownership and, and the lease agreement and see if there's any.
So moved.
That was quick, how many?
Um, I really believe that it needs to be.
Yeah, I, I think where the question's been brought up, I think due diligence, we should at least look into it. I, I need a second, if anybody's willing to second it.
Did we, I wasn't on the board then, but did the other nursery in town, did we have them, did we have the lease and all this stuff?
There you go.
Here we go.
That was before me, though.
Um, really, in all honesty.
Cause they're renting that property.
Yep.
Yeah.
In all honesty, that, um, didn't really go through the full site plan the way it was supposed to, against what I thought.
That's the way I look at it, Joe. Who am I saying much?
Who presented that?
Well, I.
It was only three members that night. It was myself, Bert, um, Gaynor, and Rick Murray.
Um, I'd rather be safe than sorry, and I will second that motion if it needs a second, but it just seems unfair.
Can I speak quickly? I have the lease. I do have the lease. I have the lease already. I feel when I gave it.
This isn't any way, shape, or form of denial. This is to protect the town of Halifax.
Yeah, we just wanna be sure we're doing it correctly, that's all.
Yeah.
We're doing it correctly for everybody, though, right?
Yes.
I absolutely agree with that. I.
If you did another one a couple of years ago, you'd do the same thing.
I said no.
Yeah. Well, I mean.
Well. It's just, don't make a wrong. Just mistake aid or whatever before you just wanna make sure.
Yeah, I know, my son's on, someone's on board and they're, they're proud of that of the nursery. That's bad too, right?
Can we ask your name for the record?
Steve Howard.
Okay, that, I'm just asking, cause that's procedure.
Yeah, I own country rentals. I donate a lot to the town.
Yeah.
And I live in the town.
Well, I, I get it. That's great. But I, I'm also stating that I a hundred percent didn't like how that last one went, and I was very vocal about that.
But he's, he's, he works at the nursery though, right? Right, does?
Yep.
Don't you have to excuse yourself? Well, you can be on the board and do that all.
Well, he hasn't done anything to recuse, that needs to be recused yet, so.
No, but he's, it's a similar like.
Yeah, sir, it's okay, Steve, it's okay.
Point taken.
It's okay.
Um, whatever happened with that sighting is, is, in a sense, irrelevant to this particular.
I agree.
But it's just. I mean, if there was something done improperly there, that's another issue completely. We're dealing with what we have in front of us. And, and I, I sincerely believe that we should just at least approach council with it to be sure that we're doing something correctly and, and for your protection as well. And we do have a motion in front of us. We have a second to refer to council. Uh, I'm gonna ask for a vote. Um, I'm gonna start with Amy.
Yes.
Myself, Tom, yes.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Um, Bert, do you wanna vote on this? We're, there was some question. I don't think there's an issue here, but it's up to you.
Uh, yes.
Okay. Unanimous to refer to council. Just, just to be sure, we're looking at everything we should be looking at.
In, in that inquiry, uh, point, I, I think the, the question should be asked also that if, if all the permits, the, uh, special permits, they, uh, for all the different kinds of, do they run with the, with the applicant?
Well, that, that's.
He leaves and moves the business, or does it, uh, run with?
That, that's, that's what prompted my concern about sending it to council.
Does it toll when?
Right.
It seems.
Right.
I think in this situation just is a little bit, in my eyes, just is a little bit different as well where it is a mixed commercial residency where it's not subdivided. Um, again, I've been vocal about the fact that that I didn't, I didn't like how that last one went, and I'm not gonna get involved with saying that, but that was a commer, a full commercial property versus, um, this property where it's not subdivided and the whole thing back and forth, so I have questions about it. But just for the record, and everybody knows, I mean, you can look back at the video, I said no to that little one.
But, but it gets a little, even a little grayer because when the zoning enforcement officer wrote his denial, he didn't include any other issues. He just included the fact that they needed a special permit. So, that tends to preclude some of this stuff. That's why we need some legal advice here.
At the end of the day, so the lease say if they're doing all the paperwork, is that okay?
Yeah.
The question is.
Yeah.
I'm assuming yes, but we still need to make sure with council. That's the, that's the question.
Sure, should it have been done through the owners of the property, which is no question in my mind. So, we're gonna, we're gonna send that off and get it back as quickly as we can and try to get this resolved for it.
Do you need to get the con, the contract in place?
Thank you.
Yeah.
It might, might figure out. Get a form of.
Yeah.
Don't, uh.
Yeah, anything.
Copy, copy, yeah, copy, so we can refer it to council, yes.
In all honesty, Sam, and it, it might be a little bit of protection for you too, just so that if you don't start making, I mean, you've already put money into the plans, but if you all of a sudden built it all and then we have issue, it's also protecting you.
I know, but the thing is true, like, I'm just trying to do this, you know, I'm gonna be here for so many times.
I know.
I wish this would bring it up to me like in the last meeting, because right now I'm going through the winter, and every time, next time I come, it's gonna be something else that'll bring it up. I'm not just, just agreed it, but I, I'd like you guys to say, okay, if you got everything okay.
That's what we're trying to do.
Yes, but let's say you guys, you guys go come and say everything's okay, and we're okay, because what about now we're gonna have to get another meeting again for this?
Yeah, and we also need.
You see what I'm saying?
Well, right now, I think site wise, everything is. Yeah, it's, it's just a matter of legality wise, I'm guessing, is this the biggest thing.
It's just crossing teeth, dotting i's.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out, I want to be next year on the notch, when I'll be okay to open.
I don't think that.
Is this, is this referring to council, something that could be, uh, conditioned? Condition that satisfies council?
I wouldn't be comfortable with that.
Just to figure it out.
I, it's a good question, but I, I personally would not be comfortable with that.
It's a good question, but I, I personally would not be comfortable with that.
And one last question, I, I, I respect what he's trying to do and what you're trying to do, but I'm simply representing an, an abbot, if you will. And wait as the lighting stand.
I'm sorry?
Is that it?
The light...
Does that come later if he wants to put lights on the property?
Yeah. Or...
Or amend his...
Or amend the existing plan now, while it's still open. That's a, that's a good point, saves you another filing. Uh, but we think we need another extension.
We do.
I just need to move on, you know what I mean, I just, I don't really, this point, you guys write it.
We, we, we get it, but we want to do it as right as we can.
Something has been brought to our attention and, and we need to deal with it.
It's a legitimate question.
So we need, um, a thirty-day extension because your site plan review is up on eleven fifteen.
Yes, you need to come in and leave a request with, over here.
So it's thirty days?
I don't know when, when this will be done, you know what I mean?
Well, we'll send it off, I mean, it's, it's not gonna happen tomorrow because nobody's here. So it'll go off the first of the week and try to get it back from the attorney well before the next meeting at least.
This is just the ZBA we're talking about, correct? Getting the special permit, is that where you're...
No, he's, he has a special permit.
He has a special permit, so...
What we're looking to make sure is that, that the special permit is issued to the right people.
That's, exactly, that's what I'm getting at, correct? That's, that's all, it's not all of, everything that we've approved, but yes, it's ZBA, yes, okay.
And, and if the lease is an issue, we... Yes.
We're getting a... We're getting a site plan extension right now, because it was gonna be... Oh, we can, yeah.
Yeah.
Site, site plan-wise, everything's been answered, but we need to make sure that this, you know, legal, that...
Because you're saying it's a corporation that rents from their business, so it'd be a different person anyways normally, right?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
When it normally be a corporation that rents from like, you know, say I own a piece of property, my realty trust would be the one that, that be owning the property and that I, the business would be renting, it'd be a different person anyways, wouldn't it? Yeah, but that's the question.
Yes.
Whether it should be the owners and then lease it out. Yeah, but the owner can just be the name, you know what I'm saying? I'm sorry? A realty trust can own it. Yeah, oh yeah, of course, yeah, yeah.
Agreed, agreed.
That's not a hundred percent of the mileage.
They have the variance.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the question.
That's the question.
Who's the variance?
Yeah. No, I know, but in every, every business, that's who's doing it.
Typically, it's not a variance in place for a building, right? Like, the building's there, trust owns it and the company rents from that, it's already in use. This is going for a different use for a permit is what the question is.
I go right down 106 with a million people like that. You got a bunch of building going on right there, there's nothing on that's doing it.
Correct.
Yep.
Nobody's arguing that, it's just, the question came up and we have to address it.
Exactly, just have to address it just to be, you know, informed on it. My, my guess is it's...
Yes.
Probably not an issue, but that said, we need to ask the question.
We have an abbot right here questioning it and we're not sure how to answer it.
Exactly, exactly, not sure how to answer it, so...
This is the right one.
I'm not, I'm not an attorney. I can tell you how the lights have to get wired for the parking lot.
Wife and sister-in-law.
Okay. Um, I make a motion to give a thirty-day extension, um, from November fifteenth, making a December fifteenth expiration date, twenty twenty-five for PSPR dash twenty-five dash four, five thirty-ninth Plymouth Street.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded for a thirty-day extension to...
December fifteenth.
December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. All those in favor, because we have a zoomer, we need a roll call vote, Mr. Gainer.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Tru?
Yes.
Myself, Tom Elias, yes. Okay, but we'll put you on the agenda for the next meeting.
What is the next meeting?
Two weeks from tonight.
Twenty.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
I'll make you a copy and we're gonna need your signature on it. I make a motion to have, um, five thirty-ninth Plymouth Street, PSPR twenty-five dash three, um, on the agenda for November twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Does that work for you, by the way? No plans to go away for the holiday or anything?
Yeah, I would come over with a, a few more things right now, so...
You, you need to sign this. We have a motion in front of a board to place five thirty-ninth Plymouth Street on the agenda from November twentieth. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, we need a roll call vote, Mr. Gainer?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Tru?
Yes.
Myself, Tom Elias, yes. Unanimous.
I'm gonna make you a copy of the...
We're gonna take a five-minute break here and we may get back at it.
The date of the extension, your next meeting is when?
The next meeting is the twentieth of November. The extension will run until the fifteenth of December.
Okay. Seven o'clock?
Yes.
Amy's...
Jump over.
We're over here now.
Hang on, Mike. Sorry, Mike.
Thank you. Sorry, Tom Elias. All right, now that we're all back together, again, the next thing on our agenda is a discussion about the estimate from Midland General Contractors for the traffic signal system at three fourteen Plymouth Street. Just a refresher, um, they were asking about potential of getting a temporary certificate of occupancy based on the fact that they're having so much difficulty getting a mast and arm for one of the traffic signals. And we indicated that, uh, we would want some assurance that the project would be completed should a temporary certificate of occupancy be issued. And we asked to get an estimate, um, for what the cost of that equipment might be and we received one from Midland and we had a partial response from our review engineer.
Want me to take care of it?
Yes, please.
Bell Traffic Signal Maintenance Company, which is a, uh, company from Forty-One Moore Road, Waymouth Industrial Park, um, Massachusetts, has given an estimate of, for item number eight one five point oh one, which is a traffic signal system for a hundred and six thousand dollars. Um, I'm not sure what the I. S. means on that. One?
I think it's a line for what, for the conduit, oh, oh, for that.
Yeah, I don't know what that means. But it says either LS, I believe, so I don't know what that thousand means. Bert, do you know? What an LS, okay. Uh, item eight one one point three two S., I, I mean, I know that, I'm just reading it out loud for Claire, just to be, SD two point oh three one, which is a twenty-four by twenty-four PB with F and C. And that's two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars each. And then I have, um, an F slash I dash three inches, um, SCH eighty PVC conduit and GC tri- Thirty-eight dollars per linear foot. Price includes drilled cord, pier mast, iron foundation, complete standard pedestal foundations and traffic control box foundation with pad. Price excludes trench excavation, backfill, removal of excavated materials, soil sample, borings, restoration of surfaces, safety controls, material testing, highway guide signs, utility fees as built, sales tax and police details. Price is valid through May ninth, twenty twenty-five, and I'm gonna guess that he means twenty twenty-six, but we'd need that typo. Because that's, that, I mean, we should have that as a twenty-six and not a twenty-five to protect ourselves because say we go to do it and they say, oh, well, that was only good until May twenty, you know, I would have it updated.
Yeah, um, I think we were talking about the cost of the project plus.
Well, the poll's dated four-nine, so the same is only good.
I know.
Five-nine, so I don't think we can change it, it's not gonna be valid.
Yeah, right.
I think we just added, yeah, increase.
Yeah, we're gonna have to...
Just for the bond, that's all we're trying to do.
Yeah, just for the bond, yeah, exactly. I mean, he can do a cash bond if he wants, but typically we...
Yeah, like the Schedule eighty, that's just saying per linear foot, you know? I don't know if that's installed or not, so it's, that's just a...
Just to buy it, yeah.
Yeah.
But then...
Yeah, he did say excluding trenching and...
Backfill?
And backfill.
Yeah, exactly.
We're at a hundred and six thousand, thirty-eight, just say two hundred and fifty.
Although I think...
Everything's in.
I believe they said everything's on the ground, they're just setting the system up though. They're just taking down what's there and putting up the new...
Correct.
Poll, so that's already done.
The pad's there.
Yes, so that means, yes, the piping's there, they're already to...
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, Patrick Brenn, Brennan sent a letter that says, hi Danielle, I do not have much experience with this type of work, so I am not very versed on the estimated cost. I also did not find these item numbers on the latest MAST dot cost estimating website. However, I know that Bell Traffic Signal is MAST dot contractors, so I believe that their quote is likely correct. I don't feel comfortable with likely correct. Um, I think we should find out who to send it out to for maybe another quote.
Well, Bell would be the one to probably send the...
I know, but if we're gonna be doing a bond and making sure that everything's correct, we really should have somebody that's an expert, because just as a note, I mean, we all don't know what SD two oh three one and, and thirty-eight dollars per linear foot, how many is that?
That's, that's a pull box, the, uh, second item, but the question, the pull box is already in. I'm assuming, I think everything's in place, we, that's the one question we want answered, just is that in place? Is it just this traffic signal system they're talking about?
I think it's just the hundred and six thousand.
So you're saying we should ask Midland a couple of questions, is that what you're...
I, I think so, yeah, I just asked a couple of questions, like, this hundred and six, is that installed? You know what I mean? Are the pull boxes in place? You know what I mean? I'm assuming the pull box and the conduit are already in place, they cross the road. So the question is, the traffic signal system, is that just materials only or is that installed? Uh, what does it say? Price includes drilled cord, pier mast, uh, complete, standard pedestals, does it say installed in there? Drilled cord, pier mast, iron foundation, complete. Foundations, control box, this looks like it's just, um...
Trench excavation.
This looks like it's possibly...
Yeah.
Excavated materials, soil sample, borings, restoration of surfaces, safety controls, material testing, highway guide signs, utility fees as built, sales tax and police details. I find it hard to believe that that stuff isn't already in, but we need some clarification.
Yeah, there's a little bit of clarification. I'm, I'm assuming the one oh six isn't installed because they're not excluding it, but they're not als-, uh, because they're also not stating it there, but that makes me think that they're installing it for the one oh six.
Yeah.
So that's just a matter of adding a multiplier to it that we need to do, a safe multiplier to it.
Which is typical of any bonding.
Yes.
You're always gonna do that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, why don't we ask them to come in to the next meeting and in the meantime, we send, uh, try to get some indication of who to send something out to. Maybe we ask Pat Brennan if he could forward it to Bell.
Well, Bell is the person who gave the quote, so maybe we could find another...
I think he said, he didn't actually say he got a quote from Bell. Or was it?
Yeah, I think he reviewed it, let's see.
Oh, yeah, it was Bell.
He said, yeah.
Yeah, this is Bell's quote, to Midland Construction.
Yeah.
Yeah, right at the top.
Is there anything else in the...
I don't know what we sent.
So basically, we're asking Midland or Bell, what's left and what's that cost?
Yeah.
Because this isn't old.
Yeah, I, I've all of them.
Yeah, because this is...
I think we get them in here.
Yeah, this is from April, so it's a matter of, you know, if the conduits are in, the...
Yep.
The bases are in, you know, everything's in place, it's just a matter of the traffic signal system. Does that include labor? Does it not? You know, a few questions, so we at least have a, you know, I don't want it to be a, you know, two hundred thousand dollar item with, you know, that says one oh six.
Yeah, well, yeah, we don't want to get to the end there and say we have to finish it.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Exactly.
We've been down that road, no pun intended, before. All right, so let's get a motion to ask somebody from Midland to come in and talk to us about this quote.
I will make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to request Midland to send a representative to our next meeting or a follow-up meeting to discuss the traffic control vote.
Roll call.
Roll call vote. Mr. Gainer?
Uh, I would, yes, uh, based, based on the fact too that, uh, from what I understand with the discussion tone you had, that the materials have been awarded already, so, uh, so the May two thousand twenty-five date is probably correct, where it's already been ordered and they're waiting for, for it to come in.
Oh my gosh, that's a really good point, Bert.
The number is, is, is correct and, and, or the date is correct on that matter, but, uh, again, this is just to ensure the bond would be held to, to cover the, to cover the costs of, of, if it has to be replaced, that we don't come through with, with the signal there.
All right.
So, uh, yes, I, I would, I would vote yes to have us, Midland come in to, uh, to explain ba- basically, uh, and, and Tom, go, correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't the, uh, don't they have to agree to the bond amount also? So for us to say...
Oh, no, no, they, they have to agree to it, yes.
A hundred and ten thousand dollars. If, if they said, no, uh, we're not going to agree to a hundred and ten thousand dollars, we, we should get some kind of response from the home company.
Well, if they were not to agree, if we would not come to agreement on a bond amount, then we would not give any temporary certificate of occupancy, that's the...
Carrot.
The carrot, yeah.
I mean, we'll get...
Not that we're gonna do that anyway.
Am I okay to do a site visit just to see what's there and since I, this is what I do, so it's like, I'll know exactly what's been done, I can go look at it and say, yeah, everything's here, like, it's just they're putting up the mast, like, I'll know right away, look at this, this is my lab, so...
Absolutely. It's a little confusing up there too, because you've got, the road originally was gonna be put in by the developer of the storage facility and then it was not gonna be completed because that was not gonna go forward and they were only gonna complete the road up to the entrance to the restaurant, oh, Starbucks, I was trying not to name it, but it's Starbucks. And now I don't know who's doing what, so, uh, so it's a, it's a valid...
Yeah, I know what this is, I can easily take a look at this and, you know, right away, this way we'll be informed on everything and I can say, yes, this is done, that's done, you know, that's not done, you know what I mean? Hello?
How much better, how much better could that be?
Um...
Utilize what we've got here, yeah?
So Bert made a huge good point, because this, this here, um, quote was given on April ninth, twenty twenty-five and it already is expired. Like, I was thinking of it more on the fact...
I bet it's already ordered.
It's ordered, yeah.
Yeah, and the question's...
This is when they quartered it back in April and now they're gonna delay.
Well, yeah, true, but it does say price is valid until five nine, two thousand twenty-five. We need to see something that says that this is the price, that they already purchased it by this time. Correct, just to make sure, you know what I mean, if things are, you know, things really haven't gone up much and, uh, things have only come down fortunately recently, but that said, you know, you got quotes, you just want to make sure that we have a reason.
Prophecy.
Exactly, yeah, absolutely.
So we have a motion, so I don't believe we voted on it, correct?
Only Bert said yes.
Bert said yes?
And then we just went back to discussion.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure we follow up with our vote here.
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Bruce, Jamie?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom, yes. Unanimous. All right.
Point of information, where is this, at Starbucks?
Yes.
Is it a crossing light or are we gonna be treated to another stoplight?
No, it's, it's the repositioning of the existing signaling.
That was there for stop and shot.
Yes. There's, they've got it set up temporarily at this point, but they have, and I guess it's typical of what's going on, masks and arms for those types of things are really on back order, and you could probably attest.
I'm pretty sure at the last meeting, they said everything was done, they're just waiting to put the masks and arms up, but, you know.
And writing would be good.
Exactly, that, exactly, so.
Well, we can get super technical when we get ready, if in fact we do think about signing off on a TCO, uh, so we need to do a little research, they need to work at this a little harder.
Yeah, and I think that there's other things on the site that need to still be answered and all of that.
Correct.
And, uh, as I recall, they were talking about not opening until sometime in the spring.
Yeah, I think they mentioned April, March, April, something like that.
Yeah, March or April or something like that, so there's a little time, um, so, okay.
Okay.
We can say goodbye to that one for now. Um, the next item on it is some, a decision letter for five ninety Montpont Street. Um, we have a decision letter, but one of the things they were supposed to do was present us with a plan, so we could sign up on the plan as well. Um, I, I personally were reluctant to sign off on anything until they fulfilled what they said they were gonna do.
Agreed.
I don't see why they don't take care of that, that doesn't seem like a big issue.
Yeah, well, we need the plan to be here too, because we're caught over the decision letter, which I'm in the wrong place.
Was to, to have the plan presented, yeah, so, um, I don't know that we need a vote on that.
Now, do we have to send them a letter to ask them for a plan?
Uh, plans, do we just wait till they bring it in, or how does that work?
We should probably have.
We should probably, uh, alert them to the fact that we, because it was on the agenda, that we did not sign the letter, because they did not fulfill their obligation of presenting the plan.
Yeah, so we wanna make sure that this plan doesn't have that roof over the exterior part, and you wanna read this, because we never run this into red.
Sure.
Okay, and this is the proposed letter, so if anybody sees anything that should be added or subtracted, then write it, ready?
Yep.
Okay, October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, um, proposed decision letter from Matt McCauley of five ninety Montpont Street Halifax, Mass zero two three three eight. Dear Mr. McCauley, at a meeting held on Thursday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, the Halifax Planning Board voted five to zero to grant the site plan review application for plan number OE dash four one five two dated three fourteen twenty-five for PSBR twenty-five four, which is the application number. Site plan application was submitted on July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five by LPAC Engineering on behalf of the property owner Dan McCauley to re- develop the existing building into an event space and coffee house said to be located at five ninety Montpont Street Halifax, Massachusetts. As shown on assesses map nineteen, lot sixty-three, book five nine seven, page four eight, with the following conditions as listed. One, there will be no seating on the deck, and the deck will remain unenclosed. Removal of, of the roof from the plans that are being approved needs to be shown. Two, there will be no exterior bar on the deck, portable or otherwise. Three, there will be no service at all on the deck. Four, there'll be a maximum of fifty people allowed in the building, plus four employees. Five, there will be twenty-seven parking spaces and two handicap spaces. Six, tables need to be laid out on another plan of the coffee shop. Seven, all events are to be catered. Eight, seating of fifty people will be for special events only, and the coffee shop is to be closed during special events. There will be no valet parking. Um, in making its decision, the planning board reviewed the criteria listed in chapter one sixty-seven twenty-eight H of the Code of Hal- um, Code of the Town of Halifax as part of site plan review, and was assured that the use of the property was reasonable based on the criteria listed in the bylaw. Any change in the use, the scope of the use, or the location of the business will require a new modified or modified site plan review and approval. And really, any relief requested by the applicant, which is not expressly granted here under, is hereby denied. The following are the votes of each planning board member on the application, and it's a five to zero, so all of us were here, and we all voted yes. Um, wasn't there something too about maximum amount of people on the property?
I, I was thinking that as you were reading it, I think at any time, that the occupancy, because they were talking about, um, you know, maybe if they have a very small function, they could still have some occupancy in the shop or spread it out. But I think we, I recall we discussed a maximum occupancy at any time.
It's just a fifty.
A fifty.
Yeah, that's the occupancy for the building.
Yeah, I think we should revise the, the letter to include that.
Okay.
I mean, it's, because he could have the coffee shop open, and that, I just can't have a specially set as a special event, just the, the end of the day, it's fifty people, that's it.
Fifty people, that's it.
It's how you do it, you know what I mean?
Oh, fifty plus four, the four.
Correct, right, but, exactly.
Yeah, Tom, I don't think it's, uh, revise it, I think it's just complete it, because.
Yeah.
You can't revise anything with, it was just.
Yeah, yeah, well, no, revise what's in front of us, that's all, that's what I.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And the only other question I have is, uh, when does this application expire?
Well, we already voted it, so it's not about, like, the application expiring.
What we're doing right now is we're stating that there's an incomplete application, and, uh.
He didn't fulfill ours.
Whether we voted in favor of it or, or not, because we voted in favor of it, if we have an incomplete application in front of us, that, then.
We had conditions.
It's not valid, it's not valid, as far as I'm concerned, you know.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, that's kinda what we're saying.
Yeah.
If the conditions were that he had to present these things, and he has not done that.
The application.
So he cannot proceed.
It's not completed if they haven't followed through with all the requirements of any application, not just theirs, or anybody's application requires.
Well, so, I, I totally agree, so let me, like, um, I understand what you're saying. My thought process on the thing is that we approve their application with stipulations, and now they have to come through with the stipulated things in order to have their approval. Because they're not changing, yeah.
They technically.
But I see what you're saying.
I think those, yes, but what I'm saying is exactly that, uh, anyways, you know, those stipulations, they're all great, but if we have an invalid application, then just because.
No, it isn't the application.
Five, five, zero, zero, if they don't have a, a complete application, but I, I believe it, it would be null and void.
It isn't so much the application, Bert, it's, it's the fact that they did not follow through with the stipulations that we voted that night. So technically, they cannot proceed, I mean, they can't get a building permit unless they satisfy the conditions.
Yeah, we haven't signed anything.
And we haven't signed anything, so they can't go to get a building permit.
That's what I mean, that, we're all saying the same thing.
Yeah.
But if there's a check in.
Yeah, and that's why we're not signing it, yeah.
But on the line, yes, it, it should be complete and, and up to the, like any application, if it requires nine sets of plans of what the, what the finished layout's gonna be, and they don't provide the nine separate plans with what the finished layout's gonna be, then as far as I'm concerned, it's not important, even though we voted five zero, it's incomplete.
I agree.
They're not getting the required, so.
We, we have not signed it, and it is not authorized until we sign it.
Yeah.
And, and we won't sign it until the conditions are there.
Yeah, and one of them is that we need the updated site plan, and then the interior tables, because we don't have that.
And it's, what was their extension until any, you know, they're, they're, when they were, what, what date were they extended till?
Well, they weren't, we actually signed it, I mean, we voted, so they're good, except that they can't proceed until they fulfill the conditions.
All right, gotcha.
So they have to get their plan in, showing that the roof isn't on the deck, and then they also have to get in the tables for the coffee shop layout.
Okay, yes, very good.
Yeah, so we can just verify the occupancy.
We approved all of the things at the last meeting with them, so you certainly know what, what's required.
Yeah, yeah, and we haven't heard a thing from them, so that's the.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm looking for the other one, the circle for Danielle. Oh, right here.
All right, so I think we're good with that, right? Did.
Did we need to vote to send a, a notification?
We should, just to be.
I'll make a motion to, um, send notification to Matt McCauley regarding, um, incomplete PSPR twenty-five four conditions, and, um, that we didn't sign the, um, decision letter due to the fact that there are incomplete items, such as there will be no seating, um, sorry, uh, removal of the roof from the plans that are, um, so that we have that on file, and that we need a layout for the coffee shop, um, in our hands.
Yeah, it was approved, the conditions that these things would be taken.
Danielle, I put it back in the signatures thing, and I also put the extension we had signed tonight in the signatures folder, okay?
So we have a motion, we need a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to send a letter to say what Amy said.
To complete the application in order for them to get a decision letter, okay?
All those in favor, roll call vote, Mr. True.
Yes.
Myself, Tom, and this, yes, Jamie Walsh.
Yes.
Bruce Sylvester.
Yes.
Berker.
Yes.
Yes, unanimous, thank you. Uh, okay, that takes care of that, we have some bills, but.
I would like to recruit, recruit myself from the same voice.
But before we do that, Mr. Alger.
I'm Tom Alger, three forty Columbus Street, I just wanted to give you an update as to, uh, the status of, uh, the drainage and the encroachment and all that, so, um, the drainage, I met with Joe Peck and his contractor, and what they decided to do is to, um, uh, excavate the pipes and put in, um, crushed stone, or, or some sort of stone, uh, and then also put in, uh, uh, drains along the pipe, so that the water drains into the pipes and goes into the golf course.
Okay.
Uh, so we've allowed them up to May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
To complete that.
To complete that, um, also, uh, Mr. White, I think, has satisfied the encroachment, so, uh, he's no longer encroaching, I, I don't believe, so.
Just looking from the street, it looks pretty good.
Yeah, it looks nice, it looks really nice, um, and then the, the only question that I have is, are we able to find, uh, the plans, the approved plans for, uh, the, uh, storage facility?
Uh, that is a good question, Danielle, are you still there?
Yep.
I didn't hear a lot of enthusiasm with that.
What'd you say?
I'm sorry, Tom.
I, I'm gonna assume you haven't had any luck finding those signed plans?
I have the ones that are on my computer that I was looking at earlier, um, I don't think Chelsea was able to find them on her end either, so I could print eleven by seventeens on Monday.
Okay.
Of plans that I have, um, the latest updated approved plans.
If you have them electronically, can you send them to, um, to, uh.
Caesar.
Hmm?
Caesar, so that we can have it up.
Either Caesar or, uh, to, to the board of health, so she can print them. But are those the?
Yeah, I can do that.
Are they signed?
Are those the signed final plans?
That's what I was just about to ask her.
And do, do you know offhand, those were sent?
I don't think they're the signed ones, because this one, this was before my time, so I'd have to look and see.
Yes, before mine too.
Of course, you had to put me on the spot here. Um.
That's our number one job, Danielle.
Yeah. Yes, you are. Um, let's see. Uh, this might take me a few minutes, because like I told you, this wasn't always three eighteen, so now I gotta go back.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that, that generates a lot of confusion, you're right, good point.
Yep.
Should we store it, Jamie, right now?
Thanks, Jamie.
Good job, just fine with that.
One second.
Because they're doing an awful lot of work up there, and just wanna make sure that it's what you, what you approved.
Yep.
Agreed.
Well, es- especially since we have.
Go out of this one.
I don't like all that.
You go up there, see the tree store, that one, yeah.
Thank you.
I like the blank check, let's go back to that.
Um, we should have that all weighted out, I mean, blacked out, the, um, account numbers on the checks, WISP.
That's just the application.
Yeah. I'm gonna go up.
So I, I mean, I see, I have plans here, I don't think these are signed.
It was twenty twenty-three.
I believe they should be from March of twenty twenty-three.
See, three fifteen.
Sorry, I'm used to having dual screens here, so this is.
It's all right, no, no rush here. Behind my, my. I said, it's you, oh, yeah, it's good size. And it's always the news when I look at the agenda, and I say, oh, this is a wide agenda.
This looks like the server at my office, oh my god. It's folders everywhere.
I'm gonna try and just drop them in the R drive.
I didn't realize that, I thought that was a setup.
Oh, thank you.
So you should be able to just open up, give me one second, um.
I don't know what that is.
All right, there's already a file in the R drive for three eighteen, um, so I'm just gonna drop them right in that file.
That was the A and I.
Uh, all right, there we go, should be in there now.
Thank you.
Are they under three eighteen, huh?
Yep. And it says zero and three fourteen Columbus Street.
No, I'm gonna imagine it would have today's date on it.
No, she said, what was it, three twenty, March twenty-three?
Would you find it?
I hope so.
That looks up here, isn't it?
I didn't know Amy was, I thought Danielle was controlling it.
Oh, yeah, it's me.
Scroll.
What's the date, I'm gonna scroll, oh.
Three six.
Yeah, three six.
So I don't know.
I think, did you, did you go in the subfolder, because you don't wanna go in the subfolder.
Okay, so let me.
Three eighteen Plymouth Street, Orange A LLC, that folder.
True storage, that one?
Yeah, should send that one down.
Yeah, and then it's right on that, and, and there's two other folders in there, but I just, I didn't put it in those folders. It should be right by the drainage report.
It's the first regular file underneath the file, I mean, it's, I mean, first regular document underneath the subfiles, correct?
Yeah, it says zero three fourteen Columbus Street.
Yeah, all right, yeah, got the right one, thank you for clarification, oh, what did I do?
Oh, we got Bert.
Oh!
We don't wanna see that.
All right, let me go back. Uh, that's not it. Okay, I'm just gonna start right here, and there it is, we'll put it up. So it's not the signed plan, and I don't remember if we've had, if, if we had any, um, and I'm just saying this out loud, I'm not saying it to you necessarily, Danielle, just to be clarification. I just wanted to make sure, I don't know if any changes were made from this, I don't remember that part.
No, that, that was. What makes me nervous is that the plans they were using, they thought there was an easement there.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I, I remember that, yeah. Well, it was definitely on the plan, but nobody actually had an easement.
Do you want me to add the decision letter in there too?
Um, you might as well have it in there, so you can do that, but, um, I don't, thank you, Danielle.
I assume the larger building is the two-story building, right?
Right. So that shows the drainage, not there, but that's our separate issue.
Because, uh, there was a contractor in the office today, when I happened to be here, asking about that building, and he was concerned about fire rating the doors for the, for the storage units, and then the question came up, uh, that thing with two floors was almost nine thousand square feet, I think, and, uh, that would have to be sprinkled anyway.
Fifty-nine one eighty.
Nine thousand, was that nine thousand square feet? Yeah, I, 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 it, it was definitely over. Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was 9,000 when I did the quick math.
In how in facts, I think it's 15,000, isn't it?
No, that's for the size of the building, but as far as sprinkling goes, 7,500 square feet.
Is that not in the building, was that does that, it's not on the rocks? I was gonna say, oh my god, I just put that in.
Remember when?
I remember when.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is the plan though, that's the thing, because I don't know if there was any. We'd have to go back and hunt through the meetings, which. And see.
I don't think he started the buildings yet, right?
No, I don't think so.
I couldn't see anything there.
I think he has the, a drainage and everything.
Yeah, the plans you guys saw show easement right there, and this one doesn't show it, right?
I don't see any.
Shows the drainage up above.
Yeah, but no easement.
He gave the planning board carte blanche in terms of site visits. Anytime anybody wants to go out there. I would just put a caveat on that to let them know that you're coming.
Yeah, there's no easement on this plan. Again, though, where's the signed plan?
Yep, you guys weren't only signing all the plans in those days, now we're signing every copy.
We were signing them.
You were signing all the copies?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought that was not happening at one point. I wasn't here, so.
I always have plans signed up.
Should we require him to come in here and present?
I don't know. Well, I know that there was plans that were signed, but. It's a lot of improvements. Typically, at least in the past, there used to be a requirement to provide nine copies. Lately, I think we've been signing four full copies.
No, we've been, we've been passing them down.
Yeah, yeah, but not all, not nine.
No, we really didn't, remember the last?
At one point we did, but then I think we said we didn't need that.
Even the last thing that we did want to sign, we had like a whole. I don't even remember how many.
Yeah, we were passing copies.
Oh, I thought it was more.
I think we were signing.
It was like nine pages on each thing, but I think it was all like three copies.
Yeah, three or four.
Oh, I see what you mean.
So I think even, Mr. Phillips, I think you were even kind of surprised that Mr. White didn't have the.
The signed letter, yeah.
Oh, the decision letter?
The decision letter.
Yeah, he didn't have anything, and to that point, without a signed document, you don't know if he's working on an old plan. A new plan, a revised plan, a pre-revised plan, or what the heck.
And that's what I'm concerned about, you know?
Me too.
Can we ask him to come in? Is that how the norm for us, or?
Yeah, we gotta ask him if he has a signed plan, so he can come in with it. One of the things that happened here was the move, when everything got moved upstairs or downstairs, a lot of things got misplaced. Some finding plans.
But the board here is giving him cash block to do whatever he wants at this point. And this poor guy that was trying to do something, he has to jump through the hoops.
I'm not arguing that, I'm saying, you know, one of the reasons we can't immediately pull up a signed plan has been this problem. But hopefully, he has a signed plan that he can bring into us.
Who did the plans, where they?
No, that was S C O.
That is Silvus.
Silvus, yeah.
Yeah, because he did it for the PEX, right, that's who does their work. I'm pretty sure it was Silvus. Yeah. I mean, literally ask Silvus to send us a copy.
So the last updated part was on 3323, but I don't remember if there was any ones after that now. I mean, we've gone through so many applications over the last several years, I can't remember if the last one. So we'd have to look at meetings to make sure.
If we can find the decision letter, the date of the decision.
We have the decision letter.
What's the date on the decision letter?
It's 23.
Immediately after the third of.
It's not, it's May, it's May of 2023.
So.
So there's two months that went by.
There could be another plan, yeah. I have no history of it, so I, I don't know.
I think you were elected right as it was coming. Or you must have been. Danielle, did you put that decision letter in here? I don't see it, but I have it somewhere.
Yeah.
I think it's down the bottom, correct? Is it down the bottom?
Oh, sorry, I see it now, May 10th, right before the election.
Yeah, okay.
At a meeting held on April 20th, good point. File number 981300, two-story building, 18,000 square foot building, to be located at 0314.
Does it refer to the plan?
Nope.
It should refer to the plan with a date.
Oh. File number 981.
Revision on March 6, 2023.
So that.
Should be the plan.
That should be the plan, yeah.
Oh, so it is right there.
Yep.
Yep.
And back to the plan. If I'm. I thought it was the third. On this plan.
It is the third.
Oh, no.
It's the sixes when they.
So that's the plan.
Yeah, so that's the plan.
So we need to get you a copy of that?
Yeah, so he was using, he's using a different plan than this.
Yeah, because the other one clearly showed an easement, and I don't see it on this. Not by my vision stack or anything.
So let's hope that that was the only change.
I'm making a motion right now to send to the owner, I believe Tracy White, is that correct? Tracy White, for 318 Plymouth Street, the plan from 36, 2023. Along with a decision letter from the planning board to, and to make sure that his plans are.
Are the same.
Are the same. So if we can get him a copy of that and decision letter, I believe we should nail it to be sure.
Oh, we could ask him to come in.
We can ask him to come in.
Bring the plan he's working with.
Okay. Okay, so then I retract that start of the motion, and I would say that. Danielle, can we make sure that this is plan, this plan is printed in full? In three copies for the next meeting on the 20th? And invite Tracy White to come in for 318 Plymouth Street, clarification?
And ask him to bring the copy of the plan he's working with?
Yeah.
I can do that, I'm gonna have to ask Peggy to show me how to print on her big printer. But do you want me to see if he can come in before that?
That's the next meeting?
No, I know, just I mean, just into the office to bring it in?
Yeah, except that we won't be in, in meeting to discuss it.
Oh, I just mean, I mean, I could get you an answer sooner and then.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, ask him if he, absolutely, you could separate from the motion. Ask him if he could come in. We'll leave the motion as it is to come in at the next meeting. If we're satisfied prior to that, that's different, but I'd rather have everybody here.
I want, maybe we should put it in, how about we do this? Why don't we send him an email that says, please tell us what. Plan, your date and number you're using.
I'd rather have him come in.
I would too, but we might as well put this in writing, I mean, if he's using the wrong plan, we need.
Should we have him stop before he continues?
We need clarification.
Let's send him a better, a little different wording on that letter. It has come to our attention that there may be a discrepancy in terms of the plan you are now using for the construction of the storage facilities. We would like to verify that we're all working with the same plan. Could you please bring, come to the next meeting, or if not prior, to present the plan you're working with, so we can verify that you're working with the same plan that we believe is in force?
That was signed.
That was signed, except we don't have a signed copy, so I was trying to look like that.
We should have.
Do you have anybody watching this?
Engineering consultant?
We have a consultant.
Review, on-site review, just to see what's there.
I don't know if Pat has a signed copy, but he'd know what the.
Because he did do a site, did do a site visit recently, correct?
Yeah.
Oh, good idea.
Yeah, I mean, he did a site visit, was this the drawing he had when he was doing, did he have a drawing, did he not, you know, so.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure he had a subsurface. I don't know if it's so much the actual construction.
Right.
But they should all have a 3623 on it.
Right, the last of us. Thank you.
Take care, huh?
Nice to see you.
Yes, thank you very much.
See you next meeting, probably.
Yeah.
I like the idea of asking Pat and Tracy what plan number they are using.
Yeah, we can, we can reach out to Pat too, to see what he's using. Which isn't necessarily what Tracy's using. So the bottom line is, we still have to get Tracy in here to find out what he's using. To make sure that it's what we think it is or shouldn't be. I mean, if he wants to, you know, Danielle could certainly contact him and ask him to come in sooner rather than wait for the next meeting, but I think we should at least take it up at the next meeting when we're all prepared.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think what, yeah, I think that if he comes in earlier, but I definitely want him at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that's the right way to do it.
If we find out that he's not using the correct plan, can we tell him to hold off until the 20th?
Yeah, but we'd have to see it first to verify that it's the wrong plan. I mean, he may not know it's the wrong plan, is what I'm getting at.
Will you start with the wrong plan?
Yeah, yeah, I understand with the easement, but I don't know if it's just the easement or.
Well, either, neither here nor there. So you saw that he has a plan with an easement on it, and he might be using that? We need him to stop until he comes in here and verifies and has the right plan. If he has the wrong plan, then he, he needs to, he needs to get.
I don't know, the, my concern is, I, we don't know that the plan is only deficient in the easement. I'm looking at the structures, he, there isn't a whole lot different he could do with the structures. But he could have had a site plan showing that easement that wasn't ultimately done, because it's definitely not on the final plan. At least I can't see it.
Do you want me to pull it up? Well, no, I already pulled it in, it doesn't have an easement on it.
Yeah, you know, abutting the algebra property.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, so. So whatever plan he's using, I don't know if those, you know, I don't know where it came from, but.
Bert, do you need me to share the screen?
No, that's okay, I'll, I'll.
Let's send him a letter telling him we have concern that in terms of the plan he's currently using, there may be some discrepancies, we would like to verify that he's using an accurate plan. And not to proceed, you know, without verification that we're all working with the same plan.
Okay.
The science plan.
A science plan, yes, a science plan. That we can't produce.
Are you talking, are you talking the drainage, or are you talking the building structures themselves?
The entire site, I think.
Entire site.
I, I think we do the site, I mean, we're gonna. I'm gonna see where the water line is coming into, because if he has to sprinkle that building, he's gotta bring it at least a six-inch宽. But that, that's another question, but. This is another reason, and I'm not trying to slam the selection here, but they need to get somebody on board in the building department, so a lot of these things get taken care of.
Yeah, they elect an official to be checking all this stuff.
Right.
Can they hire an intern one?
They do have an intern one, but.
Who's Hannah?
You know, I don't know his name, he's from Carle. Very limited, you know.
Powell's Hannah.
Yeah, and there's only so much you can do, I mean, the building official in this town is also responsible for zoning. You know, when do you have time to do zoning enforcement?
I don't see the water line, do you? Is that it?
It might not be beyond that page. And again, that's not really our concern, but, you know, just.
Oh my god.
Yeah, yeah, Tom could read it out, put it all the way down like that.
Alright, let's, let's make sure we have some of the wording down here, what we wanted to.
Well, first, Pat, Brian.
Yeah, we'll notify Pat to see what plan he's using. We don't necessarily need a motion for that, but in terms of the applicant, Tracy White, right? Yeah, I said it was Tracy White. To ask him if he would come into our next meeting so that we can verify the plans for the site that he's using are the same as the signed plans that were.
Bring him with her.
Yes, yes. And, and then, you know, we can call him and ask him to come in sooner, I don't know that we need to put that in the, in the motion. But we also have to, you know, make some copies too, so that we're looking at the same thing.
Yeah, that's why I asked.
Well, we can do that in-house, so that's a plus. And if not, we can get him sent out to WePrint or something.
Peggy would do it for me.
Yeah, Peggy will do, yeah.
Peggy's awesome.
Alright, did.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Moved and seconded to notify Mr. White to commit with his plans, so that we can verify we're all using the same plan. All those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Is he gonna stop using the, stop building it?
I know, we're gonna get in touch with him, I, I, I'll make a point of coming in.
Hold on, then we can, can we add to that motion, can we amend the motion to say that if it's not the same plan, that we need him to stop until?
I don't know that we have the authority to do that.
Well, it's not, if it's not the same.
We're not, we're not the enforcement people.
So then we need the building inspector to do that.
Yeah, this is, this is why I was bringing it up. I, I, I think, you know, I, if the, if the consensus of the board is okay, I can contact him and tell him that. I don't want to throw that onto Danielle.
Right, I, I.
Tell, tell who?
Tracy White. Listen, we got a problem, or we think we have a problem, you might want to hold off doing too much until we verify that we're all on the same page. But as far as the motion to ask him to come in, I think that's separate.
Correct.
Yeah. Everybody okay with that?
Okay.
Alright.
So we don't need a amendment after all?
No, I don't think so, I think we let him know, I mean, we can bring it up to the building inspector too, but he's gonna have no idea what's going on up there. I, I don't want to, that's not demeaning him, I'm not trying to say he's not capable, I'm just saying. He got thrown into this, and to get up to speed is kind of tough. I mean, hell, I'm not up to speed, so. Amy?
Yes.
Myself, Tom, Elias, yes. Jamie?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Are you still out there, Bert?
I'm here.
You following along?
I'm doing the best I can, dude.
I keep forgetting you're there. Can I get a, can I get a amen, or can I get a vote?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous. Okay, we will follow up, and I, I will make a point of coming in Monday and getting up to him if I don't see him tomorrow. Because he did give us an open invitation to visit the site at any time. The tricky part is, it isn't always easy to get on the site. Alright, we have a bill?
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, take care.
Alright, we have a plan here for $473.35 for a deal you weigh-in invoice number 568A.
Killing us over there.
Out of the revolving account.
Killing you.
So we have a four-person voting?
Yes. We need a motion to approve, did you make a formal motion?
I believe so, so I made a motion.
Okay, we need a second to pay the bill.
I believe.
For.
$473.35 to P G B Engineer, want me to start over?
No, that's good.
P G B Engineer.
I'll second the motion to pay the invoice for $473.35.
Moved and seconded to pay the invoice for deal you weigh. All those in.
Roll call.
Yes. I was gonna say, all those in favor, we're gonna take a roll call vote. Jamie Walsh?
Yes.
Amy Truitt?
Yes.
Bert Gainer?
Yes.
Tom Elias?
Yes.
Unanimous, yay.
I was like, showing them all names.
Well, actually, I remembered them, but it's always good, actually, I was.
But I did, I did give you the one I did.
I've known Peggy for 25 years, I was struggling to. I've known Peggy for twenty-five years. I was struggling to, who's, what's her name again? Peggy, oh, Peggy. Uh, meeting minutes. Has everybody had a chance to look at the meeting minutes? I know Danielle would like to get these signed and done.
Bert's gonna come in when he gets back.
So is that a motion to approve? I, he said he read, um, uh, October second, twenty twenty-five, he didn't find any errors. Is that a motion? So moved.
Moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes for ten two twenty-five. All those in favor, roll call vote. Mr. Gainer?
Yes.
Ms. Tru?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Millius, yes. Yay, one down. How about nine eighteen and nine four?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Moved and, moved to approve the minutes for nine eighteen twenty-five. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, a roll call vote. Mr. Gainer?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Millius, yes. Ms. Tru?
Yes.
Unanimous. How about a motion for the meeting minutes of September fourth?
Um, move them.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes for November, that's November, September fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Roll call vote. Mr. Gainer?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Millius, yes. Ms. Tru?
Yes.
Unanimous. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Could I actually ask a question first?
Sure.
I have some other business. I'm just curious, real quick, so. When it comes to bonds, who in the town follows up on the bonds? Who's responsible to follow up when there's a bond taken for, say, a road or, you know, traffic signals or whatnot? Planning board, is, are we the ones that, like, are supposed to check up on it and say, has it been done? Who's, who's responsible for calling the bond company or?
The, the, the bond is actually placed with the treasurer. It's not released until we release it. And we would have our review engineer verify that all the work is done, which is part of what he's gonna do anyway at some point. Uh, he has to verify that all the conditions were met.
I understand that, but let's just, you have a bond that expires in December, okay?
Our review engineer, we would call the review engineer.
Before the bond expires?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Yes.
So do you, this is a really good point. So you're all done, right?
Yes.
You believe you are.
Uh, yeah, I got a couple more things, but yes, but I'm just curious, like, in general, so.
It's, Pat Brennan was doing the review work there, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
So we would call Pat. We should probably call him now.
When, when do you need him out there? Do you want him out there?
Oh, yeah, no, it's not just for me. I, I'll get my things. I'm just saying in general, a blanketed question.
Oh, but we can have it on the next agenda is what I'm.
Oh, yeah, no, we'll, we'll, we'll wait till it's, I'm just talking general terms, so. And, I don't know, Danielle, is that something she brings up? Hey, the bond's coming up. Who, who knows the bond's gonna expire? Like, expire, we're all coming here, like, who knows when it's gonna expire? You know what I mean?
Typically, it should be the treasurer.
Okay, just, just ask them the question how we do things in town here.
Cause it's gonna sit with the treasurer.
Yeah, I, so I don't, like, I just was wondering, you know, cause she could fall through the cracks, and once it falls through the cracks and somebody still hasn't finished, all of a sudden he said, hey, we need a bond. Well, too late, the bond already expired. You can't call a bond company.
We should put a ticker on it too, and I don't know that anybody ever does.
We were supposed to, we were supposed, actually, there is part of the motion was that it would be, um, finished by November twenty-ninth, I believe, this twenty twenty-five.
Yes.
Um, so you, do you wanna have Pat Brennan go out before November twenty-ninth? And then, um, what date is the expiration?
It's, it's the middle of December somewhere there with the bond, so.
So you wanna be on the agenda for December fourth with Pat Brennan, have review so that we can.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. That's something I'll, I'll have to contact.
Well, we, we, we can do that in the form of a motion, put you on the agenda for that day.
Okay.
To review the, the project.
And, um, yeah, just when you're done?
Or, or soon, I mean, if you, so you can cancel them all.
Well, no, that doesn't matter. I just was, you know, that's a glad I should brought him, cause I gotta finish the things, cause Pat said, you know, if you have any outstanding things, you got them under the bond. But my thing was like, I'm like, well, who, you know, how does it, how does it work? You know, who's, who has the clock? Who's, who's cell phone saying, hey, that bond just expired, just, you know, it's gonna be expiring, it's supposed to be done by this date?
They don't all have an expiration date. Some of them are running blonde. Depends on how you word it, how you put it in.
Oh, that's a good point, too.
Yeah, I mean, any bond I've ever gotten is either a one-year or a three-year or a five-year, depending on the contract that I signed, but it's typically, we try to do a year bond because it's cheaper, right?
Less money.
And every year we have to renew it.
Yeah, so just some hours, it's a three-year bond, the three-year mark comes up, just so you have someone as a reminder to the town saying, hey, you know, this is coming up. They haven't done the work yet. Call the bond company and say, hey.
We want the money.
We want, we want the money. We need to get this done.
Very good idea. I mean, good point.
Just was rolling through my head, cause it's, you know.
That's how you run.
We should verify with the town treasurer.
But I do need to get on the agenda too.
Changes in the treasurer's department over the years too, but typically it's the treasurer who monitors it.
The treasurer does.
Okay, cause they're with her, and for the, and for the benefit of the town.
Sure, I mean, I don't know how many bonds are out there. Probably not many in the town right now, if I had to guess.
No, we weren't taking bonds.
Am I the only bond in the town right now?
No, there was a small bond on, um, what's the road off of Highland? I can't think of it right now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the, the last one that went in.
Yeah.
She would. Maybe, yeah.
Yeah, it's on the leg off the truck or something, yeah.
So just some, cause it's not, it's kinda new to the process, just to make sure it doesn't fall through. I'm not worried about Delia Way, but.
Yeah, for, for any other projects, yeah.
Yeah, that's all.
We should also have it on, um, our calendars. When we issue a bond, we should also have our secretary to put a reminder on.
We don't always see it though, cause the bond gets, doesn't get delivered to us.
Uh, no, uh, oh, interesting point, yeah. I had it in the meeting. I should have brought the bond here to show that I had it to the town. But it's just a matter of, just, just follow up. If you have something that's really big that's going on, anything, little big, it's not like a lot of money. We don't want to pay for anything out of our pocket or just have another road that's sitting there that's not getting done.
Yeah, I think, I think when we get to a point where we're taking a bond from somebody else, we'll come up with a procedure for, for the board here.
Yeah, and a copy.
That's, okay, good to know.
So that we're all on the same page.
Yes.
So we'll come up with a procedure, um.
When you decide the minutes, is there, I didn't see a signature page.
I didn't tell them that.
Oh, yeah, everybody's on there. Okay.
I do, um, we do have mail, um, but I will say that there is on Monday night, there is a zoning board meeting for Barn on, um, eleventh Ave. Don't know the details off the top of my head, but they are on.
Eleven Ave?
Yep.
Pretty small lots, too.
And I don't have enough time in me to be able to read it all. There's a couple of big lots on that.
This one doesn't look blue. I like, I can only sign it blue. Uh, uh, it's my O C D.
I like that idea, though, to make, um, a good procedure for that. That would be a really good idea. Thanks for that.
You're welcome.
Um, I'll make a motion to put Delia Way on the December fourth, twenty twenty-five, um, meeting and, um, I also would say that it might be a good idea, yeah, um, to.
Those also just, uh.
When Bruce, when you're ready, for, um, P G B, you can either call Danielle and have that her make an appointment for the town for P G B, or you can.
Yeah, I meant, I meant.
All right, so you can just call him out?
More efficient for you.
By the twenty-ninth and then, um, and then we'll be on that December fourth meeting to square it all away. You know that after we vote, we also send a letter that it needs to go on to the warrant for May.
For May, great.
Unless we have a special town meeting ahead of that.
Ah, okay, I didn't know. Excellent.
Cause then the town formally votes.
Yeah.
To accept it.
Typically, the town likes to do those at the end of the town.
He's very good to work with. Oh, yeah, talk for it as well. We, we walk the road. We do a lot for it, so, yeah, he's, he's excellent.
Roll, roll down it, nice and smooth. Really nice to have that on the document.
My neighbors, my neighbor put up, Mike put up, we love you Bruce and Paul. Uh, so thank you Bruce and Paul. Mike has all the stuff, did it in a big heart and put it on one of his trees.
Well, this, uh, who else saved them there? I mean, that was a mess for a long time.
Yeah, it was wonderful.
Yeah, those pictures of, of the street really, really did a nice job down there.
Yeah, they, right, yeah, T and K did an excellent job. Really, could, could I make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, please. Moved and seconded to adjourn. Okay, we gotta do a roll call vote quick so we can keep it under two hours. Bert?
I, I thought we already adjourned.
No.
No, no, we started to.
I spoke, yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Tom, yes. Unanimous, we're out of here.